We'll call this work session Monday, October 7th to order. Invocation given by Emma Lackey and a pledge allegiance by Isaac Lackey.
Thank you, Lord, for giving us this day and our many blessings. Thank you for our wonderful city. Lord, put a hedge of protection over our city and our city officials in our name. Amen.
Come in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and pure and just as for all.
All right, first thing tonight on the work session is the retail strategies update. Mr. Kaufman and Mr. Smith.
Tell me when you're ready.
Yeah, if you can go ahead and switch it over, that'd be great. All right, good evening, everyone, and please bear with me. Me and microphones are not friends, so I'll try to find the right distance here. We are really pleased to be here. Thank you all for having us this evening, and we're really looking forward to doing a little bit of a recap of our partnership over the last three years, break down exactly what's occurred, the wins we've had, where we stand, and also what we're working on currently, and hopefully potentially discussing our pathway forward for the future. So I'm Garrett Smitherman. I'm your portfolio director. This is Drew Kaufman, your retail recruiter. Obviously, y'all know Drew. Drew is really the machine behind everything that we're doing on behalf of Scottsboro. He is working the contacts. He is reaching out to the corporate entities, talking to the landowners, the brokers, all of the real behind-the-scenes real estate work that's going on on y'all's behalf. All right, just a brief recap of just the partnership lifecycle. Discovery is a major component of what we're doing, and it's something that's happening continually. That's everything from analyzing the market conditions, what properties are available, doing demographic research, really identifying and using data products to be able to kind of pinpoint who the Scottsboro consumer is so that we can then relate that identity to these national brands so that they can have a good idea of who's on the ground, what the community looks like, and whether or not their target consumer lines up with what the market is presenting. Extensive data analysis is occurring. That's also part of the discovery phase, and everything from our conversations with y'all about what y'all want, what the public is wanting in regards to new businesses, new brands. That is all wrapped up in this ongoing discovery and analysis that we're performing, doing market visits, identifying and cataloging what properties are currently available on the ground, where potential development opportunities might be, what may be changing hands, what deals may be have fallen through. All of that is critical information for Drew to effectively essentially play this matchmaker game between local landowners, brokers, leasing agents, tenant reps, and the brands that they represent. The strategic recruitment, excuse me, strategic recruitment plan specifically designed for Scottsboro, that's taking all of this information, breaking it down into a strategy so that we can pursue the national brands that y'all would like and the businesses and products and services that maybe there's a gap for in your local market. Then it's active recruitment. That's Drew being on the phone, reaching out, going to trade shows, including Retail Live in Nashville, ICSC Southeast, which is actually next week if I'm not mistaken. And so he'll be in Atlanta with hundreds of players in the commercial real estate world talking about Scottsboro and what opportunities to hear and trying to get that one step closer to new deals being done. Hopefully, that then results in wins, successes, which luckily we have some to share with y'all tonight that I think y'all are already familiar with, and then we just go right back into it again. And so that's just a brief partnership lifecycle of just all the components that are sort of driving this engine that we're running for y'all. So our secret sauce, really the secret sauce for us is taking the data, taking the market analysis, taking the demographics, but then presenting it to these corporate brands from a real estate perspective. And so we're really looking at Scottsboro not as your neighbors to the south and people that are from Alabama. We're looking at it from a national level so that we're speaking the same language as these entities that we're recruiting on your behalf. That's, again, taking the data, presenting that in the same manner in which they analyze markets that they're considering for expansion, and then continually updating, pleasantly persisting in these efforts to recruit because these deals take years. I mean, sometimes 18 months, 36 months before one comes to actual fruition and dirt being moved. And so it does take this continual sort of effort to follow up, to take feedback from the prospects that we're talking to, and then determine, is there something that maybe needs to happen locally on the ground to make it more attractive to them? Or it might just not be the right piece of property, and they're interested in the market, but they're holding out for a particular piece of property that fits their, essentially their structure of how they go about deciding when and where to expand. So again, this is just a brief little touch on the timeline, and really what this is showing is the number of hands that are involved with a national brands corporate, excuse me, commercial real estate deal occurring starts with investors in Wall Street. Investors queue Wall Street that the brand that they're investing in wants to expand, they want to make more money, queue up Wall Street. That then ends up going to the real estate director at the corporate level to start analyzing particular markets. And the reality is, they don't care where it is. They're being charged with opening a certain number of stores that will generate a projected bottom line, because again, these are money people. That's what this is about. It's about profit from their perspective. So from the real estate director, that then goes down to the local tenant reps. They're then analyzing market opportunities, analyzing site possibilities, identifying which markets are best. Then you're getting back to the tenant rep, talking to the real estate director, and presenting, you know, what they've found for particular markets. Then that potentially goes to the corporate committee to decide yes or no. Then you actually get to a letter of intent. You're getting to ink on paper, and then potentially getting to dirt being moved. As you can see, there's a lot of hands involved, and that briefly kind of sums up why some of these things take as long as they do to commence. This is what we're thrilled about, our partnership recap. This is kind of the meat of what we're here to discuss. So we are currently in year three of our current partnership. To date, we've reached out to almost 100 national brands on y'all's behalf. We have secured three wins, including the Chick-fil-A Dunkin' Donuts and the Jersey Mike's Subs, which we're quite proud of, and we imagine y'all probably particularly like having the Chick-fil-A, just like everybody does. And then the focus areas for our retail recruitment continue to include quick-service restaurants, particularly full-service restaurants, and general merchandise. These are some average, national averages for stores, just to put some of these numbers in perspective. The Chick-fil-A, the average Chick-fil-A annually generates $8 million in sales. For a local 3% sales tax, that's a $240,000 return on that one win. Again, the 8 million is an average, an average for all of their U.S. locations, but that kind of puts it in perspective about the value, and that's just from a sales tax angle. Dunkin' Donuts, 1.2 million average annually. That generates out to $36,000 in sales tax revenue. And then with the Jersey Mike's, 1.3 at $39,000. And again, that's just the sales tax. That doesn't include property taxes. That doesn't include the dozens of jobs that these new brands and new businesses bring to the market. And so the return, just from those three wins, and again, the average employee count, those are averages nationally, same as the sales, but you're looking at between 55 and almost 100 new jobs for just those three businesses, as well as a total sales tax revenue of $315,000. And that's, you know, you don't see returns in the 250-plus on investment very often, but, you know, when you're able to sort of make all these pieces sort of fall into place at the same time, and sometimes it does happen just right, and other times it might take multiple years. And we certainly have seen situations where, you know, a market was primed up and it looked like it was ready, and just maybe the real estate, the owner of the real estate didn't want to sell. And so there's all sorts of things that can hinder the success of these types of partnerships, but we're thrilled with the results that we've gotten to date in the three years, three wins. We've got a couple more that we think are right there, close to the finish line. But here it is again, just to put it all in perspective, $120,000 investment over four, over three years, excuse me, generating $315,000 annually, as well as at least 55 jobs, increased property tax revenue, new market retailers entering y'all's local market. We know that retail begets retail. It builds on itself. We also know that a ton of national brands, they kind of follow each other around the country, and I don't know if y'all have been out on the road in the last couple of years, but you see new developments and you start seeing these very similar visuals in regards to what brands are anchored and surrounded by other brands. And so retail begets retail. And so when you start getting that momentum going, it really can churn up some great success. Obviously, the quality of life, providing new options, providing new products and services that weren't here prior. The national marketing of Scottsboro as a community, by Drew, at the trade shows to hundreds and hundreds of real estate people, developers, tenant reps, franchisees, as well as corporate real estate directors, the value of that in and of itself is certainly high. And then obviously, the investment in the economic development has, from our perspective, more than paid for itself, and we're excited to share with y'all what's coming up. So a few additional items, just macroeconomic items, and I'm sure y'all have probably considered at some point in time or another that are impacting the speed of construction development, but also the access to existing real estate. Just real briefly, the Federal Reserve interest rates, obviously, they just cut them by half a point in September. That potentially could spur some people in the coming quarters if maybe there's more cuts to take out loans to do new construction, maybe more so than a lot of people have. And at the same time, if you're looking to acquire and you're taking out a loan for that as well, obviously, that might spur a little bit more action in the market from the big players. But we think that the coming quarters will sort of determine that overall impact. Retail vacancy rates remain extremely low in existing space. What that obviously results in is very high competition between national brands, between local entities. The competition is high. With the competition high, the supply low, prices are up. And so that's making it a challenge for certain parties within this world, this industry. New construction costs also remain high. The interest rate being cut potentially could have an impact on that, but again, that's something where, you know, there are different angles being taken by different players, and, you know, we will continue to see how that component, the construction costs as well as the interest rates, plays out over the next two, three, four quarters. And then closure opportunities. There are some big box operations that continue to announce closures around the country, just to name a couple, Big Lots, Cons. These are generally large spaces, but when opportunities like that present in market conditions that are reflective of the three previous that I touched on, larger macro components of the market in general, that creates an opportunity for someone to backfill that space, which is obviously a lot cheaper than acquiring, you know, acquiring land, building something from scratch. All right, I'm gonna let Drew take over from here and fill you in on what the current situation is in regards to prospects we've been talking to.
Thank you, Garrett, and good to see everyone again. Drew Kaufman, I'm your retail coordinator. And so in short, my job is to know everything about the market and connect with the brands that I talk to at the shows, whether it's franchise-driven or corporately-driven like Waffle House. That one's a fun one because we've been trying to get the guy to tour forever. And originally, they deemed the market where they were like, oh, we don't know if we want to do a store here. And so a lot of these brands, I hear no all the time, and a lot of these brands need, you know, how do you approach them? How do you send it? How do you talk to them about it? How do you get them excited? And I used to be on that side. I was a real estate manager at Books-A-Million. So my job, I got emails all the time, and that's a long story, but Waffle House is corporately driven, so you have franchise-driven too, which is Fazoli's. And so y'all maybe know who I'm talking about. They did a deal in Fort Payne. I've been trying to get him here. He's toured. Mayor McCamey and I have had many conversations. I can't tell you how many since the three years we identified them. That's the only franchisee for that brand and company active in the state. So that's really cool. You don't see a lot of those Fazoli's. They closed the one in Prattville. So, and I think just with the election year, everyone's being very cautious about growing and opening, but one takeaway from ICSC, and I'll know more next week, as Garrett mentioned in Atlanta, people are remaining optimistic because you're either growing or you're dying, the famous Lou Holtz speech. But in order for these retailers that are driven by Wall Street, you either have to increase new sales or your sales in your current existing assets, whether it's a restaurant or retail, or you open up more. And so a lot of them have to. TJ Maxx has to do, I think last year they had to do 150, and that real estate director, his job relies on hitting that count, or there's someone, I don't even know who that would be above him, that's going to be upset if they don't hit that number. And I want this to be open dialogue. If you're like, well Drew, what's going on with Highway 55? And I know that's been a long prospect. Corporately, they're on hold. We hear that all the time, and then they're back doing, they'll tell me one thing one day, and then tomorrow I'll probably, they might be active. So you have to be persistent and stay on top of them. I know one of the biggest goals is to get full-service restaurants here. That has, trust me, it's a tough category, but we do have active interest. Some I can't really talk about. Oh, you're okay. Some I can't really talk about, but some are, with that sort of, that type of tier of restaurant, they're going to want A-plus real estate. So think where the signals are around town, and some of the roads haven't been developed, but there's curb cuts and things like that. Think about, like Garrett mentioned, you want other people thrive together, and that's what we call co-tenancy. So as you go in, you know, Dunham's, that shopper's also going to go to Ali's, and that's why they all coexist. They're not competing uses. Obviously, you're not going to have, say, a sports, you know, like Dunham's next to Academy. That would be a restriction, and they have an exclusive in their contract. So there's things you have to navigate around, and sometimes the real estate's just not there, and that's okay, because I turn, say it's a no, I turn it into a no comma and, but when, things like that, not at the right time. So going back, you have to tell a story about Scottsboro and get people excited. And a lot of my job's not really real estate. It's influencing, telling a story, managing expectations. You know, anyone can get on Google and look at the market, but, and to be frank, the population from just the city limits hasn't really grown since 1980, but there's also a custom trade area. And I can see on the mobile tracking, everyone that's pulling from Scottsboro, and that's what we mentioned about the gaps and the voids. So I'm like, hey, there's nothing here. Y'all would kill it. I know y'all are sites scoring well. A lot of the brands here do above national average, and that's really important. If you tell a franchisee, hey, you'll do X amount more in sales in this market, people love to eat out and shop. That kind of gets them more interested, so there's ways I make it appealing to pitch. Not anyone's really doing that in just the brokerage world. It's kind of, you know, what are they going to get out of it? And I'm here working every day and eat and breathe up here, so that's kind of the point is how we influence. Here are more brands. I could talk for days about this. Very passionate about it, but Scooter's Coffee is really exciting. The franchisee and her partner did the one in Fort Payne, and we immediately got connected with them, and they have a great real estate corporate team. We're very close on getting something executed, and that'll be a new emerging brand. I believe, you know, everyone does different sales in different markets and what the site is, and how many cars they can get in there a day. That's why vehicles per day are so important. But they'll do probably 1 to 1.2 million, and they'll have, you know, it's only drive-through only, so they won't have that many employees, probably like five to 10. And then Bojangles executed early, so we'll see them soon. And that one's going to be interesting because you probably imagine the Bojangles you see, you know, whether you're going to and from Huntsville or Fort Payne and going south. It's, this one's going to be new. They've just kind of changed their, I call it a footprint or prototype. They're going to be on an end cap with the drive-through, and there'll be 6,000 more square foot to be leased. So there's a group out of Athens that's very credible, and they do a great job there. They've changed the community. They're doing that deal, so it's, I feel confident about it, and that's one thing we wanted to talk about today. And so I'm going to be helping the franchisee lease the rest of the space that he'll be in there with. So whether you hear people locally that already are franchising the market and they may want to do another brand, sometimes they can do multi-unit if it doesn't compete. Obviously, a Dunkin' franchisee can't franchise with Scooters, so it's things like that. So I always ask the community if there's anyone that you know, whether they're selling property or they're retiring, and this could be conversations at Piggly Wiggly or Publix and you run into Ms. Susan or Mr. Bill. Please let me know, because I'm in Birmingham, and just Mayor McCamey and I, you do such a good job of keeping me in the loop. I appreciate you, so that's just a good example that I like to ask. And that will be on Mr. Martin's property, just so you know where it will be. So Scooter's will be good. Firehouse is another one that the franchisee, I don't want to say he's very optimistic as well, but corporates approve the market, and we just got to get someone to pull the trigger. So as this space is being created right now, they'll be a good fit. They don't need a drive-through. A lot of their sales are people walking to the door. I will say drive-through's a plus. A lot of brands do over half their business through a drive-through. To be frank, again, people are lazy, and that's why you see the curb-in parking or curb-side parking where you can, someone runs up your car and brings you your sandwich, and then everyone has a walk-up window drive-through now. Panera Bread's a great brand that we've been talking to for years, and that's another example, just their footprint. They're doing freestanding now with drive-throughs, and you would have seen them in line somewhere and people walk in and sit down. So things are changing. It's my job to know what COVID's done to all the brands and adapt. There was a rumor of something going on between Walmart and Home Depot. I ran the rumor down. They're not currently trying to do a development there anymore. I'll keep you guys in the loop. In the Publix Center, there was an ad parcel that was supposed to be sold, the last one, the 2.35 behind Title Wave, to the listing agent's knowledge that hasn't sold. And so we're trying to run down the rumors. We hear things all the time, and you got to fact-check them, and so there's things like that that are happening currently. But the best thing is the hotel developer, he's very interested in the market. It might be a city-owned property. I'm not sure how much I can say today, but one of my big goals is to get more activity on Goose Pond. I know that's the tourism dollars and things like that. And working with a city, I think we can all get along versus a property owner that has different goals and ambitions, and that's fine. I think that's really cool because we live in America. It's your property. You can do what you want with it. But just our common goals and visions, I think things can align like that. We'll have conversations coming up here later about it. And then to Garrett's point, I'll be in Atlanta next week, and we'll do a recap document. It's about, it says show from 10 to 5 Wednesday, and then 8 to 2 Thursday. There's never been events, things like that. Going to be doing dinners and hosting things where people can come who rep all these brands. So we say we've reached out to 93 brands. It's a lot more than that, because when I'm talking to a tenant rep in sometimes Atlanta or Orlando, they have, you know, they run with the brand throughout the whole southeast and how many states that could be, sometimes five, sometimes one, sometimes, hey, I only work in North Alabama, what do you got? But they also represent a lot of different brands. So you're pretty much grabbing the snake by the head versus the tail, because if I have one conversation about the market, I've actually had 20 to those brands, and he knows where they're growing, or she knows what they're looking for. So that's kind of how we target it, and it's persistence. To Garrett's point again, you got to stay in front of these people. No one's telling me after I set a site, hey Drew, we bought it. Thank you for all your help. That never happens. And so, it doesn't bother me. I love what I do. So it's following up with people. Things change with corporate strategy. Things are changing the economy and economics and financials on a deal where this person couldn't get lending because the rates were here, and they weren't comfortable with putting their family's, you know, credit on the line. So there's things like that. I always hope to bring more brands here, and I just thank you guys for the opportunity to earn the business and keep working moving forward. We got a lot of cool things going on, and people are still looking, and I'm sure someone called me in the car ride home and said, how'd it go? You know, there's tons of people we talked to just looking at the market.
Well, yeah, so as Drew just said, I mean, that's the current update of who's sort of warped and some of the other things that y'all have probably previously heard about that maybe we got some additional updated information perhaps in relation to the Walmart and Home Depot development in between. But as Drew alluded to, we've got a couple of trade shows coming up, obviously one next week, and we, you know, hope to be able to continue with essentially the same strategic plan. We don't really see much need to make any drastic changes to our initial strategic recruitment plan. Obviously, continue to analyze demographics, update any of that information, update our real estate catalog, our market catalog of available properties, but are hoping to continue to see some of these irons that are in the fire through to the finish and see what else we could potentially drum up in the next couple of years. But obviously, we would love y'all's help and continued partnership to continue to do so. See if I have any questions.
You want to have questions?
I've got a comment. I just want to say, you know, I've told people for many years, the hardest part is not owning the land, and I appreciate the job y'all do of bridging that gap and going out there and, you know, fighting to get some of these people to maybe sell their land to help us grow a little.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. Yeah.
Anyone else have questions or comments? No question. I'm going to give Mr. Kennamur a chance to look over everything again for this new one, so we'll put this on our October 28th meeting as far as the contract goes, but I really appreciate y'all coming out and sharing.
Absolutely. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Gentlemen, before we go, just scanning the contract, is it basically the same thing as?
I believe it is.
It looked almost the same.
I thought through the signed one before I printed out that new draft, and if there's anything changed, it would be something very, very slight. I'll run a double check, as you do as well. If either one of us find anything, we can make sure we iron that out.
Very good.
Thank you. All right, number two tonight, discussion of fishing tournament committee. Ms. Pennington? Lydia, thank you for coming.
My expertise, I know you guys all know that are fishing, but y'all see a lot of stuff. So you guys know, within my first year as a tourism director for Jackson County, we formed a fishing tournament committee. So, you know, representative from the city, from Goose Pond and the Chamber. Beforehand, you know, we had tournament directors coming before the city, coming to the Chamber, and I think it's been really great to all work as a unified voice because we have the same goal, you know, really trying to bring the best tournaments to our city, to have the best ROI. So the fishing tournament committee, so it started off with Katie, and now we get Julia, and we had Brittany Gass, who is over Victory Sportsman. So if you haven't heard, she sold her business to GTO. But Scott Dobbins, who serves on the board for Goose Pond, has agreed to kind of step in as the Goose Pond representative. And then we've got Julia and Nita, which is great. I'm excited to have someone from the council. So in this course, the first year, we had it where we created an online Google Sheet doc, so we have a way to, so now GTO, they manage the tournaments, not manage, but manage the boat ramp, and then we have the listing of all the tournaments so the city can see it, Goose Pond can see the Chamber, any relative parties. And then we created this form, so this is a funding request form. So, and what it's nice, it levels the playing field. So when they work with now GTO to schedule their date, and, you know, they'll look at that, if they ask for funding, they send them to me. I give them this form. If they complete it, then send that out to our fishing tournament committee. I'm really excited to have Scott Dobbins. I don't know if you guys know him, but he used to work with the Alabama Bass Trail, is really smart with all things fishing. So it's important for me to, I'm not a fisherman, so surrounding myself with smarter people is always the way to go. So that way, again, and then having the funding kind of decided upon the front end, because in a few months, we're going to start getting requests for 2026. So they start looking at it much earlier on, and these are for tournaments like the Alabama Bass Trail, the Toyota Series, the MLF Choo-Choo, US Anglers, American Bass Trail, High School Tournament, things like that. So kind of having this established, it helps with budgets, it helps us, you know, and then it also, I think, saves everybody's time, because in the past, you know, you had Rick or maybe JP come before you and say, hey, here's this tournament. When you split it, this way, you know, it's, you can kind of see from that what questions we ask and what we look for. In particular is how many are coming from out of the area, because, you know, getting those lodging taxes and their sales taxes versus them being so local. So that's, I think it's going to be great. And then Julia and Nita being able to report back to the city council or giving updates, you know, if you guys want to stay involved. But any questions?
Let me say, you may not be a fisherman, but you're great with
Let me say, you may not be a fisherman, but you're great with numbers and she follows up on these tournaments when they say, hey, we're going to have this many boats and all this. She follows up to see if that really happened. And so, it's great to have somebody like that on our team.
And one thing too, Pudge, we now, this was Lyle's suggestion, so we've implemented this. So, when they sell the boat pass, boat launch passes, GTO is going to keep up with that. So, if they, some of them will launch from multiple places, but if it's strictly from Goose Pond, it's a second number check. So, you know, some of them are a little sly, so we got to be on top of things and, you know, they could come before you guys and say something, but the economic impact and they'll report out. And that's, and you'll see too, their signature, they're also agreeing to promote them to stay in Jackson County, so stay in our lodging. So, they're signing on that, they're going to promote towards that and then also that they're going to report out their data afterwards. So, that's something, in the past, we signed their contract. We didn't have them sign anything for us. So, now, it kind of holds them a little bit more accountable.
So, as she discussed, so we will put together this fishing tournament committee with Lydia, Julia Whitehead, Scott Dobbins, and Nita Tolliver. And so, tonight, as we talked in budget hearings, we're going to approve, look to approve the $33,000 that will come out of Tourism Grant yearly. So, the 2024-25 year, and they will take care of picking those tournaments instead of every one of those tournaments coming here to ask for $2,000 or what. They'll pick the best tournaments that would bring the most money here. So.
I think it's good. I have one question and I think I know the answer to it, but, you know, in the past, the Chamber has its own fishing tournaments that they sponsor and pay for entirely. How do I put this? I don't want any of their money to go toward that, the ones you've already got established, you know, like a Big Bass Flash or something like that.
You wouldn't.
Okay.
This won't even touch that.
You wouldn't want that because that would be an extra value add, I would think, for the city. Wouldn't you think?
What I'm saying, I don't want their money dissolved into the Chamber's money they already spent.
Right. So, the Chamber has our.
Separate.
Right. So, the Chamber has our budget, which of course Rick is our fiduciary agent for the Chamber. So, yeah, we have the money that the Chamber budgets each year and then that will be in addition. And then, that combined dollar goes towards the, all of them.
Yeah. I think it's a good thing because we've created a monster with the fishing tournament. People come in to ask us for the money and almost every time, if somebody comes and asks us for money and they get it this year, they'll ask for double the amount next year.
Well, this also puts a cap on it. There's 33,000. This committee will pick which ones that come and when the 33,000 is up, that's it.
Yeah.
Now, there will be larger tournaments that 33,000 will not touch, like the Big Bass Flash. That's what, 75,000?
Well, Bass Master was 70, but then we were able to work him down to what, 40 or something. So, there would be.
So, there's things like that that will have to come out here if we decided to go that route, but this will handle everything else.
Of course, and the tourism money is all not just fishing, it's other people that came for that. So, we've got a nest egg for that.
That's why we came up with this amount where we put this much and that way, we still have tourism money for other things.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else have any questions or comments? All right, then we'll move that money over to tonight.
I want to discuss that high school one that I emailed.
Oh, yes, I did say go ahead and do that tonight and I didn't bring it. Go ahead, yes.
So, the, oh my goodness, now the name of that high school tournament has escaped me, but they've been coming 14 years and I know the city's funded in the last few years. They brought in 156 boats, so the number of anglers, you probably could guess, is about 300. And then, it's high schools, so they were all staying with, in our local hotels. But this year, just with the transition of me coming in, the Chamber actually spent $75,000 on fishing tournaments and the city was less than 10,000. So, but this was, I know that the high school tournaments has been very important to the city and we hadn't used our budget yet this year. So, this was one, the tournament director, you know, and he filled out the funding request form, of course, and really was on point for putting local dollars back into the community. So, we went ahead and funded them, so that puts us now at the 77,000 mark, but if the council would consider part of this year's budget.
This is the Bass Tactics.
Bass Tactics, thank you.
There you go. And so, I ask her to bring that tonight. This would be $2,000 that would come out of the excess sales tax before this. So.
Yeah. I just knew it was important to the city to have high school tournaments and since we didn't bring one this year and with it being such a longstanding high school tournament director, I thought it was, it would behoove us to continue that.
Anyone have questions on that Bass Tactics?
Bass Tactics.
Yeah, there.
Sorry. Thank you for, your memory is better than mine today.
No, Whitney had that email still. I can't take that credit. Anyone have questions on that tournament? Let's see, moving forward, this will all be handled in the.
Within the, with the set of budgets.
Yes. No questions, then we'll move that to tonight also. Thank you. All right, number three, discuss resolutions for the Grant Administration and Engineering Services. Ms. Phillips, will you go over that?
In order to apply for federal grants, we're required to solicit and receive proposals from qualified grant administrative firms and engineering firms. So, there's two resolutions here. One is to approve for the administrative firms. We only received one proposal from community consultants. So, that's to authorize them to prepare all the grant administrative services for us. And then, the other one is for the engineering firms and we received proposals from Volkert, CDG, and GMC. And so, this will just approve us to choose from that list on a project-by-project basis.
All right, any questions on those? No questions on those. We'll move that to tonight's meeting also. All right, number four, discuss the skid steers from Solid Waste Department. Mr. Leble.
This won't be just a problem. These are the themes we have already discussed on these leases or ending on these certain skid steers. We have two of them. We can see the paper, the proposal to purchase these have been with this lease. We have one that we do need to purchase because the value of it exceeds what this concrete number is, like by 32,000. One of them, we need to return, which we discussed this already. Here's the problem with returning it real quick. We need to leave ourselves a little bit of wiggle room. If we return it and they come back and they find a plant and there's some damage and things need to be fixed and they come up with this price and what have you, and I need to return it, it may end up being cheaper just to purchase it. So, I don't know that's going to be a thing. I'm just letting you know there's a possibility. But the one at the bay, they need to pay for, because it's a really good machine. One landfill is what I'm talking about, the time it's been used quite heavily and I don't think we need to purchase it at this, which is this moment. Second part of this is a source well machine that we discussed also, it's got a lease taken on the back of it with the residual also. What I would do if the council still approves is take the machine up on the bay, which is in really good shape and we paid off, send it to the landfill and view it goes to the bay. It just, it gets some hours on it, but it's not, it may be hard use and it's just going to go for those long-term, sort of, for the time to do it.
So, would it be best, let me put it this way, if we decide to buy the one, it'd be
It will be 32,343.
Okay, okay. Okay, I see that.
I can't remember. Either one of these items been talked about in the budget?
This one, we talked about this all day.
Yeah.
So, we have approved this part already?
Well, we've approved the leases.
Okay.
So, the lease is in the budget.
But I don't think that they actually put the purchase amount in the dispute, even though we discussed it. I didn't come back and try to remind you what that's, that's on.
It's your opinion that we will be better off to lease.
Absolutely.
Both?
As far as the new one.
The new one.
This one needs to be purchased. We're at the end of the lease on those. 32,343, we need to buy it out.
So, buy it out and then lease the other one.
Lease the new one, yes, sir.
Now, could we go ahead and look at approving buying the one tonight and wait till you turn the other one in before we do the other lease? That way, we can find out if there's a cost.
Absolutely. I just wanted you to know.
Yes.
The plan is to power this.
So, to buy the other one that we already have, what's the number on there?
32,343.
Okay.
That's just a reminder of the.
Yeah, okay. And that's the one you're talking about, County Landfield?
Yes, sir. And I'll get the other one, package it, like the six, the lease in, this one, and we'll get it ready to come in.
So, let's just look at one tonight, the one either, rather y'all would rather buy one or lease one and the other one, let him turn it in and see what happens with it and then we can come back because the lease has already been approved for it. So, we don't have to do anything with it, really. You just need to know if you, if the council would like to buy the other one.
If we had to buy one, a brand new one, instead of this 32,000, what would it cost?
A hundred thousand.
Is that worth 111,000 invoices?
These are bigger machines.
Yeah.
But they're not the small ones.
Yeah.
And I said a hundred thousand, I was just getting around to that. I think it's about 110,000 or something like that.
Okay.
If you so choose not to purchase that and return both of them, it's not a big deal. That one's just worth more than what it can cost us to buy that.
So, tonight, we'll put the one on tonight and you can decide whether you'd like to make a motion to approve to buy it or to just keep the lease on it.
The 32.
Yeah, they're both the same price. But, okay. Any other questions on that? We'll move back to tonight's meeting then. Number five, discuss the road closure request. Chief Leininger.
Request tonight from Pappy's Place, it's located at 125 North Broad Street. They're requesting a road closure for a portion of North Broad from Willow to Mary Hunter Avenue. And that would be on Saturday, November the 2nd, from noon to 3:00 PM, so a three-hour window. They're going to have like a fundraiser, is my understanding, some kind of event, charity, like a wing eating contest and family games and stuff like that. They have checked, Shook's closes at 12, so that's not going to be an issue and apparently the other businesses are fine with it in that area.
Yeah, besides him, I don't know what else would be open on Saturday.
Brent's, he won't be there on Saturday, so I think everything checks out there.
What about parking though? They have a big event there.
They're not, I don't think they're expecting that many people. If they are, they're going to use around the square and just walk across.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on this road closure? No questions, we'll move back to tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number six, discuss the approval of the remaining 10% of the 2024-25 budget. Ms. Rowe?
I'll take care of it. I can't get her to talk like Rick. All right, the 10%, the remaining 10% is $2,938,436. And so, that comes out to a total budget for the year is $29,167,352. So, that being said, anyone have any questions about the remaining 10%?
We'll move that to tonight's meeting. Thank you. And number seven, announce the downtown redevelopment authority vacancies. Ms. Phillips, you go over that.
Vicky Sanders and Adam Stiles' terms on the downtown redevelopment authority expire October 2024. These are six-year terms. Anyone interested should apply in writing to the city clerk's office by 4:30 PM on Monday, October 21st, 2024.
All right, thank you. And we will save reports to the end of the council meeting, so at this time, we will be adjourned from the work session. All right. Just one second and I'll have this pulled up for the council meeting. All right, let's see what y'all got.
I'll put that. I stacked it sitting because I already had everything wrote up. So, it'll be number seven. We'll do the public hearing first. 33,000 Tourism Grant Two. Approve both resolutions for the Grant Administration and Engineering Services. Three. Four, I'll make, see what the motion is to buy or lease. Lease. And the amount would be, if we buy 32,340, the lease is already in the budget, so I don't have to worry about that. We'll have to come out excess. And then, five, road closure. Number six, remaining 10%. And number seven, Bass Tactics Tournament. And that come out of the Tourism Grant. Yeah, that's a fishing, that is a high school fishing tournament. Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. Y'all good? All right, then we'll get started. I kept you here way too long.
All right, we'll call this council meeting Monday, October 7th, to order with dispensal formalities. Ms. Phillips, you do the roll call.
Mr. Dahl?
Here.
Ms. Tolliver?
Here.
Mr. Ashburn?
Here.
Ms. Frederick?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here. All right, so before we adopt the agenda, let me read this out. Number one is the public hearing for alcohol license for Warehouse 207 for the Scottsboro Barbecue Festival. Number two, we approve the 33,000 out of Tourism Grant Fund for the 2024-25 Fish, Tourism Grant for the Fishing Tournament Committee. Number three, approve both resolutions for the Grant Administration and Engineering Services. Number four, be to approve the skid steer. Number five, be to approve the road closure. And number six, to approve the remaining 10% of the budget. And number seven, approve the Bass Tactics Tournament. So, with that being said, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm making the motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on it? Hearing number will vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is adopted. Approval of previous minutes, have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on those? Hearing number will vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. It's no old business, so we'll go to new business. First thing tonight is the public hearing. So, tonight, right now is the time and place for the public hearing, the alcohol license for Warehouse 207 for Scottsboro Barbecue Festival. Anyone here for this? Thank you. Anyone here against this? No one here against this. All right, Ms. Phillips, will you go over the investigative report?
The applicant is Candy Kobel, legal business name J-LLC. Type of license is special, special events retail, seven days or less. Doing business as Warehouse 207 for the barbecue festival. There were five businesses surveyed with no objection. Nearest church and school footage requirements were met. License application is in order. Health, fire, and building inspections comply and zoning verification complies.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any questions on that? No questions, well, this will conclude the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on it? Hearing number will vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. Number two, approve the 33,000 out of Tourism Grant Fund for the 2024-2025 budget year. So, this will go to the Fishing Tournament Committee to approve fishing tournaments. So, I have a motion to approve that.
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing number will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number three, approve both resolutions for the Grant Administration and Engineering Services. Do I have a motion to approve those?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on those? Hearing number will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four, approve the skid steer. In your motion, just make the motion whether to buy the one or continue leasing it. So, someone would like to make a motion on the skid steer.
I make a motion that we purchase the one currently on lease, 32,340.
Okay. I have a motion to purchase a skid steer at 32,340 that would come out of excess sales tax. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing number will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five, approve the road closure on North Broad Street from Willow to Mary Hunter on November 2nd, from 12 to 3. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing number will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six, approve the remaining 10% of the 2024-2025 budget in the amount of $2,938,436. I have a motion to approve the remaining 10%.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing number will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And number seven, approve the Bass Tactics Tournament in the amount of $2,000 that would come out of the Tourism Grant Fund. So, do I have a motion to approve that?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on it? Hearing number will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That'll conclude the meeting tonight. There's no delegations tonight. So, we'll go to reports. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I just want to mention something about work that's gone on this week here in the community in response to the hurricane, Hurricane Helena. Last week, collection points were established at Scottsboro Police Department, Scottsboro Fire Department, Scottsboro Airport, and Martin Aviation. Martin Aviation made four flights last week, which included medical supplies donated from Highland's Medical Center. This morning, they also picked up additional supplies at Scottsboro Fire Department for two flights today and more planned tomorrow. Scottsboro Police Department officers left this morning pulling three trailers of supplies to the affected area, along with additional trailers from local churches. Special thanks to Chief Latimer, Chief Lee, Airport Manager Corey Porter, Chris Martin at Martin Aviation, and Ashley Poole at Highland's Medical Center, and all local businesses and individuals who have stepped up to donate supplies and help those in the impacted area. That's all I've got, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. And I'll be bringing something to the next work session to look at how we can help out some. So, I know Martin Aviation's making a lot of flights. And I appreciate the mayor doing what he could at the time. But hopefully, we can step up to help cover some of that cost, too. So, all right. So, Ms. Frederick, you have anything?
Well, I just wanted to mention the barbecue festival this weekend. I'm excited about it. It's a big thing, and I hope everybody turns out for it. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Ashburn?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oliver?
Don't have anything? Just come out to the barbecue festival, please. Thank you.
It's gonna be good, nice weather.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Remind everyone, there's no meeting next week, Columbus Day holiday. So, we will not meet till the 21st. We'll have a work session 21st and a meeting on the 28th. So, with that being said, appreciate everyone coming out. I have a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? I kept you here a long time.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.